We did have one addition to this group. Mr. Glover came in and he will join the group here for the District Six Commissioners. That's Evan Bedouar, Joseph Sutton on the end, and Mr. Glover. And if you guys will give me a chance, we'll start with Mr. Bedouar with introductions. Just give me a chance to sit down, please. We'll start introductions with one minute, okay?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Evan Bedouar. Proud to be from here. Grew up on Sunset Drive here in District Six and proud to be running District Six Bruce Fork Middle School. A lot of important milestones in my life fall in the district I'm running for. And a brief history, aside from going to UT Knoxville and a year teaching English in South America to Spanish-speaking students and eight years working for software companies in Brentwood while going through law school the last four years, I've always lived here. And truly proud that we can have these conversations. These are difficult questions, but it's through this discourse that we get anywhere. And just like to say that Mr. Glover here and Mr. Sutton, it's an honor to be able to work through some of these problems with you. People who know me have told me that I'm generally open-minded. I agree with that. I like to think that I'm a good listener as well. And sure, I talk, you know, as a lawyer in the courtroom often, I really pride myself on being a good listener. So I will commit to you today and moving forward that collaboration is key on this commission. And as Mr. Cesarelli pointed out, if we have 21 different views on which way to go, that's, we're not going to go very far. So I will promise you that I will foster a spirit of working with each other irrespective of our differing worldviews. I don't think that those should get in the way of really the basic functions of government that we're here to perform. And I appreciate your time.
Go ahead, two minutes. Two minutes. Okay, my name is Phil Glover. I'm here from Giles County. Born and raised here, educated here, lived here most of my life. There have been a couple of years that I was in Marshall County, Tennessee, and about a year I lived in Alabama and about nine months I was in Kansas City. I worked with General Motors for the last 35 years. I'm retired. Giles County's gave me a lot through the years and I'm trying to give something back to my county. Now, I know I cannot change everything in Washington DC. I can't change everything in the state of Tennessee, but I can serve here in Giles County. It starts at the very bottom level and that's where we got to start. We start with the bottom level, work our way up. Now, there's things here in Giles County that's going to be coming forward to us, things we're going to have to look at in the future, the next four years. Education is one of the things we've got to look at. Growth, there's a lot of things, ambulance services, Sheriff's Department, stuff like that, that we're going to have to deal with. I've never been a county commissioner before, but I'm a fast learner and I don't mind challenges and I'm not afraid to get in there and fight if I have to. And, well, that's about all I can tell you right now. But we're going to do the best we can and I hope I can get your vote so I can go on this journey. Thank you all.
Mr. Sutton, two minutes. Good evening to everyone. Good to see you here. I wish more were here. Because we're dealing with an election year, we're dealing with the county government, state government, and federal government, and this is not minor league. This is prime time. This year, we're not playing regular season ball. We're in a Super Bowl of elections. Who am I? Retired, educated for 32 years, born and raised here, former chairman of the Pulaski Regional Planning Commission, vice chairman of the Pulaski Housing Authority, treasurer at my church, 26 years as the treasurer of the Greater Richmond Creek Missionary Baptist Association. Also, at one time, I was the president of the Giles County Education Association. So that's one of the things that's real big with me. The scripture says, "My people fail for a lack of knowledge." We've got to work on that. We cannot let little Johnny float around here playing baseball 24/7 and can't spell his name. And that's an exaggeration, but that is an issue. I am also the current president of the local branch NAACP. We had a low membership a few years ago. We're moving up. Everybody in here who is not a member and wishes to be would be glad to have you. Oh darn. I gotta quit talking. Ladies and gentlemen, be involved. If you're not a registered voter, become one. Vote in August, vote in November. I would appreciate your vote. And one last item, this is not politics. Men, be nice to your wife because Father's Day is coming. Thank you.
All right, we'll get to our first question. We'll start with you, Mr. Bedouar.
Yes, sir.
We've heard a lot of talk tonight about progress. We've heard a lot of talk about how progress costs money. We've heard a lot of talk about bringing in businesses to the county. So with that being said, what is your position on offering property tax breaks to companies as an incentive to attract new jobs to Giles County and spending county tax dollars to recruit retail development in Pulaski or in the county or along I-65?
Well, I wouldn't be, I'm always open to incentives to anything that provides benefits to our citizens. I do think the question presumes that we need more businesses. My thought is historically, we're always focused on the next new business. What's that next new business we can bring in here to tackle, you know, to be proud of? How are stuff on the back we brought in this business in these years? As opposed to focusing on how do we help our existing businesses raise their wages for their employees? How can we? So I think my focus, if elected, would be to focus on our existing businesses. Our unemployment rate, something we can be proud of, it's quite low. If we bring in a new factory that we can brag about, where are the people? Yeah, I mean, it causes a problem where there aren't enough workers to fill those positions. You know, they're going to come from Magato and Morelli. So not opposed at all to offering incentives to any business. I also don't think it's the government's role to get too intertwined with businesses, though. I think anything we can do to help businesses be better and to pay their workers better wages, we should be open to. Beyond that, I think it's the government, you know, our county commission, the role of county commission in large part is to manage the existing budget and to make the existing budget work as best as it can. And my focus, at least, will be focusing on all the little efficiencies that we can create, whether that's through technology, through tough conversations and eliminating non-essential expenditures. You know, we provide essential services as county government. And I don't want, I think we get away from the goal when we try to do too much as local government.
Repeat that question, please.
What is your position on offering property tax breaks to companies as an incentive to attract new jobs to Giles County and spending county tax dollars to recruit retail development in Pulaski or along I-65?
Let's see. Well, first of all, if you have to give tax reductions or whatever to bring in industry, as I said earlier, I worked for General Motors. Now, I know that Spring Hill gave out tax incentives, tax breaks to General Motors to bring in Spring Hill Manufacturing. Now, for how many years, I don't know, but that did bring in Spring Hill Manufacturing. And you look how Spring Hill, the community in Columbia hacked group from that. So if we give a little bit incentive to get these factories, these companies into the county, that's not necessarily a bad thing. Because you're going to have employees bringing in money, they're going to be buying houses, you're going to bring in retail businesses, you're going to bring in shops, and that's where you're going to start bringing in your tax dollars. But we also need to also make sure, well, that's money also can be used for education. We need to look at ways that we can bring in industry in, and I'm not talking about a little donut shop. I'm talking about bringing in some real industry. I'm okay with these small places, but we need to bring in something that's meaningful for the community. And far as the housing and stuff like that, well, we do have houses if we stop and think about it. I've got 30 seconds. I'm not talking much. I got a niece who just moved here from Shaverville because she could buy a house here cheaper than she could in her county. And she, once she got here, then she went out and got her job. And I also heard another guy told me the other day that he had just sold a million-dollar house in California with 1,200 square feet, moved here, bought 3,000 square feet for 400,000. We have houses. Now, I forgot what the rest of the question was. That's it anyway. We'll get back.
Thank you. The issue is incentives to get biddens to come here. I'm not really opposed to it, but don't go overboard. We cannot function as a county, we cannot take care of our obligations, offer good friendships and love. We need funds. Giles County needs funds now, tomorrow, next week, next month. Industry on the exit is, industry on the exits is okay. Maybe an incentive there would help out. Maybe there's another incentive you can use besides the reduction in property taxes. Gentlemen, what was the second part of your question?
Spending county tax dollars to recruit retail.
If the county does not have a recruiting office, get one and recruit people to come in here. Bring in John Doe or Mary Smith and get started and go from here, there, and get them to come in. The governor of Tennessee and past governors, they go out of the country to get people to come here. We can go out of Giles County and get people to come here. And also, here's something else you can do. We bring in Mr. Bedouar and his family to work here, but before he gets here, the county can give him a package that gives him maps, the name of real estate dealers, companies in Pulaski, to help him decide to come here. If I give you more icing on your cake, you might eat more cakes. You might come here as opposed to Shaverville, Jackson, or whatever. But to answer your question, some incentives would be good.
Before we go further, I'd like to give anybody else. I know Mr. Glover had a little bit more that he wanted to say, so give everybody another chance to add if there was anything else they wanted to add.
Well, I didn't address the part of the question having to do with the interstate. Sure, it would be great to see more businesses in places where nothing is happening at certain interstate exits that we have, but there is a plan in place. We have an agency who is actively working for the county to do those things. So, you know, our focus should be on our children and the education system. If you've been listening at all the past two nights, our biggest issue is where are we going to find more money for our school system? We have raised the maintenance of effort in a way twice to give our teachers raises just to get us above state minimums. So that absolutely has to be our focus. And if it means encouraging businesses to come along and helping that effort, absolutely.
Mr. Glover, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, I didn't mention the interstates, the exits. I'm really for bringing in industry or just businesses on the interstates. Bringing in tax dollars from off the interstate, people traveling back and forth, but I want it to be good, clean businesses, not strip joints, beer joints, and taverns. Now, I know it brings in tax dollars, but we don't need them tax dollars. Where we can, community can say we're proud of our county, not ashamed of, what do you got this place down here for? I've heard that many times. I want to see it kept clean.
Mr. Sutton, would you like to add anything else?
Yes, having an industry, like Mr. Glover said, a big one near the interstate is good because in Giles County where exit 22 is, we've got some semi-level land. That helps out a whole lot. You go to our neighboring counties, they got a lot of level land that helps out. Plus, in fact, in Alabama, Huntsville, they got two or three plants coming up, already going, they near the interstate. You can get to it, get out, get tracks people. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have touched on this subject of economic development, and we're going to talk about that just a little bit. Economic development works for the city and county jointly to bring in business and industry. And business and industry is economic development. An expansion of our tax base is also economic development. Housing is economic development. How do you see the commission working with economic development to expand our tax base and get more taxpayers into Giles County?
Start with Mr. Glover.
Well, I've never been a county commissioner. I'll have to see some of their proposals and plans and see what they have to offer. But I do have good common sense sometimes, and I think I can sit down and decide what is being proposed to us, if that's going to be something that will bring industry in, businesses or anything like that. And you have to just weigh it out and see what you've got. It's just like working with budgets and stuff like that. It's hard to comment on them until you actually see them. You put these proposals out, let me see what you've got and what you're talking about. Then we can see, I've got questions afterwards, we'll work with it. But right now, I've not been a county commissioner, so I don't have a whole lot I can say about that.
Mr. Sutton.
There is a gentleman that works for the city and helps the county, economic development director, and we have two industrial parks. So we can offer these parks, parts on these parks for you to bring your factory in here. And to that man's credit, he is pursuing industry and has been for the last year. But the county can help him if he will let us, because you don't want to go in another man's territory and tell him what to do. And you don't do that. Maybe somehow the commission, county government can work with him to help get more industry here. Solicit them, talk to them, encourage them. And another thing, when you bring in the town, show them different parts of town and different groups of people in the town. There are people on the north, south, east, and west side, not just one block. Maybe if they talk to more people, a more diverse group, it may help to get them to come here. And like I said, the interstate is nearby, it helps us to get product in and out of town. So talk to the people you've been talking to, but don't stay in one place. Go somewhere else. And modify your plan if you have one. We got three gentlemen up here wearing three different colored shirts as opposed to white and a black tie. If you diversify some, you maybe they get somebody's attention and maybe they'll come this way. But if you sit on it, they're not coming here. No.
Mr. Bedouar.
Well, it's interesting because, you know, some questions that have been asked tonight and answered deal with people coming here from all over as an issue. But this question really presents it as perhaps part of the solution, you know, bringing new people in. Hate to name drop, but you know, wonderful family, the Kirk Patrick's have come in and done wonderful things with their investment and commitment to their move here and have turned properties around that are wonderful. And Kitchen 218 is just another great example of that. Nops Vanderpoel was using the example last night of Tim's Ford Lake. You know, these families are building beautiful, wonderful new homes and therefore they can afford through their tax, through their increased tax base to better fund their schools and they're building new schools. So I think we need to decide as a community whether we see people coming in as a problem or part of the solution. And if we see it as a solution to really come together culturally and welcome and encourage that and to not look back. Because ultimately, we have to really take every means possible to create more funding for the schools.
Let me just reframe that question just a little bit and get you to comment each on it again. Business and industry is important. Economic development is already working to bring that in. What is another facet of economic development that we can use to increase our tax base? In other words, if we had a larger workforce, our existing business and industry would expand if they had more workers. And I know this is kind of the chicken and egg question. Do we build amenities to bring people or do we wait on people to build amenities? How do we work this to have another avenue of economic development?
Mr. Sutton, we'll start with you.
Another, correct me if I'm wrong, another avenue to, for economic development, is that what you were saying?
Yes, an increased tax base as opposed to increased taxes.
One of the things I think you can do is use businesses here to get more youngsters involved in that business. For example, Pulaski Electric has an internship. Who else has one? Who else is willing to start one? That would get high school students concerned about working with that company, maybe staying with that company, and if they stay, they're going to stay here, which means they're going to buy a house, which means we get some more tax money. It's not going to be a big thing, it's going to take care of, it is not a big thing that's going to be settled quickly. You've got to keep doing it, keep doing it, and keep doing it. And you also need to do this. Get the best people you can while you're recruiting. Say, John, you pull a four-point, we want you to come work for us. Make it known, we want you. If we get him, we might get some more people and some more engineers, doctors, however the case may be. Right now, I'm going to stop and I'm running out of words.
Mr. Bedouar.
One idea that comes to mind is through collaboration with the school board, perhaps exploring better ways to promote feeder programs into our technical paths. I have great friends, one who's here tonight, TCAT serves our community, I think in ways that go unthanked. To, the high school I worked at in South America was a technical school where the students actually decided freshman year which path, you know, really they're deciding their career earlier on than we traditionally do, as opposed to getting out of college or getting out of high school and choosing then, to really promote career paths earlier on and so that recent high school graduates are better qualified sooner to work more advanced jobs. And meanwhile, the county chamber economic development commission is promoting the fact that we have that population already here as opposed to trying to recruit the people to come fill those jobs.
Mr. Glover.
I know, I'm going to go back to the education part of that, too. How can we bring in people, bring in money, how can we help the county, whatever? It's all going to boil it back down to your education. We've got to educate our people here. And we're going to have to have better teachers, we're going to have to have schools, we're going to have to teach them better stuff in school. Now, it used to be we had to learn the three Rs, reading, writing, and repetition. We heard last night from a member from the school board that we barely just breaking even with a C in reading, writing, and repetition, but diversity, we're B-plus. Now, how many times y'all seen people out here that high school students, graduates and stuff, and they're working at Dollar General Store, wherever, and they can't even count? And they have to use their phones for a calculator so they can make change. We're not teaching them what we need to be teaching them. So yes, we do need better education, but we also need better teachers that's committed to teaching. And the only way we're going to do that is bring in better teachers. We're going to have to spend a little bit of money or whatever we have to, get better teachers. We get the education here, we're going to have the people here that industry and stuff going to come in and say, these are the people we want working in our factories and our shops and stuff like that. We're going to have to educate people, we're going to have to get things in order if we're going to bring in stuff. And I think that's one thing we can really do.
Next question, we'll continue with the education seems to be a common thread through some of these questions. So the question now is, do you think the county commission has done enough in its efforts to fund schools? And what would you add to that discussion as a county commissioner?
Happy to take that question first. Do I think the county commission has done enough? Well, I think they've done a great job. We can always do more and we can always do better. So as opposed to looking back and being critical, well, speaking of, have they done enough? They raised teachers' pay, well, they're set to raise the teachers' pay for the second time next week. I think the last pay raise was two years ago. This is no easy task, given the economic climate we're in and just the reality of our budget. But yes, they've done a good job. But I guess the second part was, what would I add to that?
Yes.
Well, first, I would encourage voters who are listening, whether you're here tonight or listening to us online, to seriously consider voting yes on August 4th or in the early voting to extend this local sales tax option to the county. I think, I mean, to say it's a no-brainer may come off as condescending, and I don't mean to do that, but I think so far, we've heard unanimous agreement that that is one way that our county can begin earning more money to direct half of which to the schools. So we need to do everything. And so if there's any reason I'm here tonight, if you don't ever hear from me again, if I don't get elected, I just want to emphasize that tonight, to vote yes on that. I would encourage you. But in terms of additional ideas, I do think, you know, some of the school board members were asked, can cuts be made from the top down or from the bottom up? Or should the focus, is the focus really being put on the students? I do believe, I do believe the school board does all they can with the budget that we're allowed to give them, and it's our job as commissioners to carve out as much money for the education system as we can.
Okay, I like the way he put that about, is it, county commissioners, do you think they've done their best job they can? Yes, but they also handle the budgets, the sheets. You have to look at them. And yes, we give this amount of money to the schools, we give this much money for this. But now on the school, on the education side, we could probably give more money to schools if we can go back and look at the budgets real closely. Now, I know even in my home budget, I can always go back and find some fat that can be trimmed, places where money's being wasted or not misused. See, that could be going towards it. Now, are we going to have to raise taxes? Possible, but I would look for all this little fat first to see if I could trim a little of it, as much of it, before I started raising my taxes. I don't like taxes, but I'll pay them if I have to. But I don't like taxes. First, I would want to go back and look where I could trim some of this fat so more money's available for the schools. That's what I want to look at. A lot of times, some money may be just frivolously given to someone and I don't approve of it. Well, as a commissioner, I'll be one of the 21, if elected, will get to decide a nail Well, as a commissioner, I'll be one of the 21, if elected, will get to decide a nail. Now, sometimes it may be a good idea to get the money, that I can be a yay. I just want my part in saying what's coming up, look at the budgets. And I don't want a budget brought to me and say, here, you got two days to look at it. No, no, I want to be able to look at it thoroughly, then see what's going on, and make a wise decision. I mean, I've worked on budgets for General Motors for, like I said, 35 years. I've been doing my own. And I believe I can handle budgets. I love numbers, I've been doing that all my life. And I can bring that to the county. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton.
For those who know me, this is a personal issue. Get wound up sometimes talking about education. I am pro-education, have been, and will continue to be pro-education. Dealing with funds, the county has worked to get more money into the budget this year and recent years. Financial management has been on the case 24/7. They need to be a part of the work they do. The school system gets X amount of dollars. There's an item that was mentioned last night called maintenance of effort. We might be able to pull some more money out of that to help the schools. I, I, I'm not going to say you can't, see, it might happen. But we have to work, we have to realize in the near future, we're going to have to find other sources of revenue, that may mean reducing some of the working staff, but at the same time, you got to be careful who you cut. You don't cut a school that has two generals down to one. That's not good business. That's just an example. If you've been spending money going from point A to point B in a big luxury coach, you might want to reconsider that, that might save you some money. But Mr. Glover makes one point, evaluate the budget, but also recognize that if the county commission works with the financial management to help make the budget good. For a while there, they went from seven people to five people, and then they're back up to seven. But in military terms, financial management are the people you want in a foxhole with you to help you get from point A to point B. They are soldiers. Believe that. Thank you.
Are we close to the end? One more question, and can we use this one for a wrap-up, too? Yeah. Uh, the way it's going to be framed. Gentlemen, you will use this to answer your final question and, and your wrap-up. What is one goal you would like to see the county reach over the next four years, and how would you approach making that goal happen as a county commissioner?
Everybody will have three minutes on us.
Beginning with? Well, I hate to sound like a broken record here, because we, it is important to be creative and have ideas, a vast array of ideas, but if there's one goal, it's create and seek and identify all the ways that we can fund the schools more, more adequately. In, in all the ways that we've talked about exploring so far tonight in our answers, and then some, you know, all of the above. We need to have these conversations, we need to have dinner among commissioners to collaborate more, and not just show up on monthly meetings and see, see which ideas, you know, connect or not. We need to create a culture, we, we need to all understand that this is the top priority. And if I'm supposed to use this also as a wrap-up, I appreciate you, you putting up with my answers, you know, I, and appreciate Scott Stewart for putting all this together, and Pulaski Citizen, UT Southern for having us, it's an honor to be here and to be involved. I sure hope that this is not the last real dialogue that I get to have on these issues as I'm really just, I have no way of knowing all the ways that we can do better until I get, get in there myself and, you know, to look at the budget is one thing, but to really dig down into it and dissect it, and see where we can cut that fat. I just look forward to that, and I, and I ask for your vote on August 4th. Thank you.
One more time. Question.
Don't forget it.
What is one goal you would like to see the county reach over the next four years, and how you, how would you play a part in that?
I do remember hearing something about us being debt-free, if I'm correct. I think I heard that. I'd like to see us, the end of four years, still being debt-free, and I'd like to see it in four years, that's education being addressed. I'd like to see the ambulance services and stuff increased, more ambulance drivers. I'd like to see the sheriff's department receive more deputies and take care of that, and let's see what else. Anything else in there? I want to see Giles County growing. I'd like to see industry coming. Clean, healthy. I'd like to see it be a decent place that we raise our children. I am a member who, over at East Hill Church Christ, I'm a deacon there, and I teach class. And I don't like the direction of things in our county's way it's going, but I think you get some right people in, as county commissioners, we can make some changes, keep things improving, growing, doing as it should be doing, but we can do it with good common sense. One thing I've found through the years is common sense nowadays is not very common. And I like to put a little more common sense back in, even in the county commissioners. And think about things before we just jump on them. Make decisions, make decisions we can be proud of, and everybody else can look back and say, you've done a good job. I'm going to have a lot of growing here and, and learning my job, and, but I'm up to challenges, I enjoy challenges, always have been, and always will be. And I want to thank y'all all for coming out tonight. I thank y'all all for being interested in politics, learning along as I'm learning along, and may God bless all of y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Mr. Sutton.
The question was narrowed down to one item, and for me, that's hard to do. Okay, one, improving the schools with our refurbishing plan, which is going to take two or three years or more because you can't get the equipment and the cost is going up. That will help. Giving teachers more, that helps. It was mentioned earlier about the infrastructure. Yes, that means the highway department needs more money to fix the road so you can get from point A to point B. That's important. More ways to get funds for the county government to take care of the county. Another thing is not really written down, but county leaders, city leaders, and other folks need to sit down and talk more often and share ideas. You don't have to agree all the time, but get them to, get them to listen to what you have to say. It might not work this year, it could work next year, we'll see. The, the internet with wifi across the county, like, see, that taken care of in the next four years. I don't know if we're going to get a new high school in the next four years, but let's fix the ones we got. We are working on it, keep working it. And another thing that's not written in the rule is that John Q. Public needs to understand he can come and talk to us. Visit, Ms. Green's office is open. Twenty, I shouldn't say 24/7, that's not fair and not right. But you can come by and talk to the lady, you can send her texts, you can come by and leave her a message written down. She will get back to you, maybe not that day, but she will get back and talk to you. And one of the, was more than one of them. If you want to get, that's a military meaning here, they understand this, you sit down and develop a plan, begin from point A to point B. You understand you might have some potholes getting there, but you keep working. We need to talk more and plan more instead of fussing and fighting. You're not going to get there, fussing and fighting, pure and simple. I'm trying to wind down. Some of y'all know what that means. A great Republican once said, divided we fall, together we stand. And that's what Giles County needs to do, what the commission needs to do, to help Giles County move. Finally, my words of appreciation and thanks to Mr. Scott Stewart, the citizen, to the vendors who paid, I'm going to save money to help this come about. Thank you to UT Southern, I almost said UT Martin, UT Southern for being the host and on search short notice. One more thing, I'm on the battle, I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you, guys. And don't forget, candidates, if you want to